Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven oh one. I'm sorry for the tardiness. We are ready to begin tonight's Rager City Council Meeting on July eighth, twenty twenty five. Call to order. Now roll call, please.
Member Horton.
Here.
Member Neary.
Here.
Member Neiman.
Here.
Member Kelly.
Here.
Member Judd.
Present.
Member Lovins.
Here.
City Attorney Edminton.
Here.
Assistant Administrator Barks.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here. A full house minus Jay, who is on vacation. I wish him the best of vacations and I appreciate your guys' presence. Uh, next up, will we please have a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the five United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Thanks to everyone for their attention to that matter. Please pardon me for one second. Next up on our docket, we have the mayor's report. I got a nice little mayor's report today. Uh, first of all, I want to let everybody know that we have been working with Redbike. Uh, you know, I don't know if you remember when Redbike started about twelve, fifteen years ago. Uh, they kind of did their their initial footprint, which uh excluded Dayton. Uh, we've been working with them over the last year or so and uh been working with another community. And so we're picking up one of their lesser used stations for quite the price reduction. Uh, we're going to be placing that in the uh possibly in the middle of the city. Uh, so uh we'll give people uh access to that share ride system. And what that's going to do for us is it's going to be bringing more people into Dayton to to uh to to buy our our chicken wings, to to pick up tacos, to uh go to our events. So also going to give all of our residents a great way to to go around Dayton, uh to check out the riverfronts, to go out and uh maybe go out beyond our borders. They have tickets to an NFL game. They can go over there with their Redbike and uh and 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 make that a nice, cheap and healthy way to to get to a game. So we're really excited about that and we're really excited about the cost savings that uh that when you poke around other neighborhoods, yard sales that you find. Uh, next up, we have a lot of park renovations that are going on. So you've probably seen what we're doing down at Gillland Park. Uh, the majority of the park renovations are going to be done. Oh, thank you, Jared, for that really nice graphic up there. Uh, the majority of the park renovations are going to be completed by the end of July. Uh, the pickleball courts will probably be towards the end of August. Uh, the Gaga Ball Pit right there, that's one of my favorite stories because we started that when we we met with the children's council, we'll call it student council. The student council of uh of Lincoln uh in Dayton High School, and they said they wanted a Gaga Ball Pit. So we 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 got this Gaga Ball Pit for them and we thought it was done. But then one day I was at Hansman's grabbing my daily turkey sandwich as I do. And this little young woman comes up to me and she's like, aren't you the mayor? I'm like, yes, ma'am, I am. And uh she's like, you installed the Gaga Ball Pit? I was like, yes, yes, we did. And she said, look at my my knuckles. And they were they were blood red. And I was like, what's up with that? It's because the way she was scooping the ball. So uh we worked with some people and we're going to have that rubberized. So uh hopefully her knuckles won't be so uh beat up and she's still going to have a lot of fun. Uh, but it just goes to show that uh we do we do listen and no matter where you see us, whether it's uh city council meetings or whether it's uh Anson's Market getting a turkey sandwich, we're going to listen to to what you care about. Uh, all the basketball courts are going to be resurfaced. Got a lot of nice new trees going in thanks to Public Works who are working it out in the hot summer sun. Appreciate that. All done? All right, you're watering them frequently, I'm sure, because you're good stewards of trees. Excellent work, sir. And that's going to that's going to be a game changer when we see these trees starting to uh mature down by uh the entrance to Dayton on on Mary Ingalls. That's uh that's going to be beautiful. That's great. Seven trees down there. So as you can see, we have a lot of things are going on in our parks parks. And uh this is all coming under budget, which is really great. Uh, Jared, how much under budget is this?
Uh, currently, it's about, I'd say sixty thousand dollars under budget.
That's that's a good use of taxpayers' money. Sixty thousand dollars under budget. Uh, Sergeant Park, continuing with a park theme, we're going to have the grand re reopening of the Sergeant Park. So that's going to be coming up here on Sa- Sunday, July twentieth at eleven AM. If you'd like to stop by, hike the trails, check out the work that we've been doing over the last few years, we will provide you with lunch and drinks. And prizes. Uh, not a park.
Ben.
What?
Hi. What time what time did you say?
Uh, that's eleven AM.
Okay, thanks.
So July twentieth, eleven AM. Not a park, but part of the idea is uh the state finally approved Riverfront Commons. Uh, this is phase three, which is going to connect the current path at the Marina all the way down to Mary Ingalls Highway and past uh yeah, past Riverside Marina. Uh, I I can't thank enough people for the work, the the years of state federal work that this has done. Uh, some of those people are out there in a crowd tonight. Uh, Will, Mike, you guys have been great partners for Dayton and Mike's going to get a chance to talk about it a little bit later, but uh just wanted to let you guys know that that is going to be completed and uh also, I believe, under budget. So thank you guys for your for your work on on that major piece of uh infrastructure. Last thing that I have uh before we get on with the council meeting is we will have an ordinance read tonight for paving. And this also came under budget, almost three hundred thousand, as we are starting to work alongside Dayton, I'm sorry, Bellevue, and combining our funds to get better discounts. So uh Mike's also going to give that that uh that update as we uh go along with tonight's meeting. So that is my lengthy mayor's report and I appreciate your attention. Next up, we have an approval of minutes. Would anybody like to motion?
I'll make a motion, approve minutes.
Member Horton's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Judd. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Moves forward. Uh, next up, we would like to uh welcome John Chamberlain uh on the City of Dayton Financial Statement Audit for the fiscal year ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. John, thank you for your uh joining us tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. My name is John Chamberlain. I'm a CPA and partner at Chamberlain Owen and Company. And we're a CPA firm in Erlanger that specializes in audits of governments, governmental entities, uh city governments. And so we appreciate the opportunity to do the work for the City of Dayton. Um, Jared and Jay and Tristan and your staff have taken great care of us uh and provided us with the things that we need. Uh, we're uh, I think Tristan, you could probably be uh attest to this, we're pretty annoying. We ask for a lot of things. And so uh we do appreciate their uh their uh working with us. Um, we've given what's called an unmodified opinion. You go to the next slide. We've given what's called an unmodified opinion, meaning there are no modifications to the opinion that are required. And that um that means that after we've done all the work that we're required to do, uh, we believe that your financial statements as presented are fairly stated in all uh in accordance with uh government accounting standards. Uh, and that's the highest opinion that we give. As a part of every governmental audit, uh we do a review of internal controls. We want to make sure that your riskiest assets are protected uh through segregation of duties, and we had no issues there. Um, we did give what's called a uh a material weakness in in over financial reporting. And uh it really just stems from when we came into audit, uh we were really having to close your books for you, uh lack of a better term. Uh, we made a lot of adjustments. Normally, an auditor should come in, a very clean audit. We wouldn't make any. It's not unusual for us to make one or two. Uh, you'll see in the next slide that that we made a lot of adjustments. And so um in in our in our estimation, your financial statements weren't appropriately ready to be audited. Now, let me kind of tell you how that comes about just a little bit, and that is you're into a lot of things as a very small city. Okay, you're doing a lot. And that's good. Good on you. That's uh that's phenomenal. Um, now, when you do a lot, you have to have the accounting function discipline. Okay, so anytime you anytime you grow as a city, you expand, you expand the things that you do, you need to expand your accounting function as well. Okay, it can't be a part-time function. It needs to be a full-time function. So now that doesn't necessarily mean a full-time employee, but that just means there needs to be full-time attention. Okay, so um so I've given, I I've talked to Jay and Jared and Tristan about, you know, some of the things that we recommend and and they're taking some of our ideas and 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 running with them. They have ideas on their own about things that we could do uh to to solve that issue. So um just wanted to let you know that because that is a relatively significant item uh to be uh for a weakness to have. As a part of every governmental audit, we also do a review of our compliance. Uh, that would be compliance with uh contributions to SIRS, your required contributions, uh payroll taxes, uh bond debt, uh financing debt, anything like that. And there were uh no issues of non-compliance that we need to report. Uh, Jared, if you show the next slide, this slide's a little busy, but this just shows we make one planned adjustment every year to net position uh to to um you have a uh a joint venture with the City of Bellevue uh to really own and run the Bellevue Dayton Fire Department. And uh they have to have an audit of their own, so we have to wait for their audit to be completed. To put that in your financials, that's why these are always a little later. Um, but uh so we we make that adjustment every year. We would expect to make that one. And then under that, you see we made ten adjustments to the general fund, and you know, most of those are not small adjustments. So that's that's where we're talking about. We we really shouldn't be making that many adjustments. If you'll show the next slide as well, Jared, these are to the smaller funds, the TIF, the Park Fund, Municipal Road Aid and the Urban. So there's just quite a few adjustments each of one of those funds that are that are required every year. Uh, that were required this year, I'm sorry. All right, the next slide, uh this is your asset comparison for your government-wide statements. So this is across all of your funds. Uh, it shows your, the green bar is your cash position. Uh, the blue bar is your capital asset position. You see your capital asset, that's net of depreciation. And that uh is pretty consistent over the last five years. Your cash position has grown steadily each year. Uh, this year, uh your cash position went up uh about seventy thousand dollars compared to last year. So that's a good uh that's a good solid increase increase in cash position. Uh, we'd like to use the uh GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. Uh, they have a suggested rule of thumb that about three months' worth of operating expenses, uh you need to have about that much in cash on hand to cover about three months' worth of operating expenses. Uh, for the City of Dayton, three months of operating expenses is right at one point six million dollars. Uh, you have four point seven million in unrestricted, so you have almost nine months of cash on hand. So a very solid uh cash position for the city. Uh, the next slide shows the debt comparison. Uh, the yellow are your current liabilities. Uh, those uh reduced about four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars from the prior year. And that's mainly uh the ARPA funds that you received, that the city received. Uh, those have been deferred uh for the past couple of years. They've been sitting on the balance sheet as deferred revenue. Uh, we actually recognized uh four hundred and twenty um four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of of our ARPA funds in the current year. You'll see that again here in a minute in revenues. Uh, but that reduced the current uh liabilities for those deferrals. So there's about fifty-seven thousand dollars remaining in deferred revenue for ARPA funds. Uh, the red is your capital lease, I'm sorry, the red's your capital lease uh for the uh fire truck. That's for the uh Dayton Bellevue Fire Truck. And uh that's getting paid off as we would expect based on the uh the amortization schedule. Uh, that's about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars remaining. And of course, this is at June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, so this is a little bit stale, but that's um right where we would have expected it. Uh, the green is your investment in the Bellevue Dayton Fire Department. Um, and that's this is always a large liability number because they have uh net pension liability, just like you do. And uh so that sets as a large negative number on their balance sheet, which makes a makes your investment basically and because it's a fire district, there it's all hazardous duty, so they have a larger number than normal. Um, then the orange, one more. And then Jared's quick. Uh, is that a hint? Uh, the orange is the uh net pension and OPEB liability, and you can see that dropped uh pretty significantly this year. Uh, any investment or any pension fund or OPEB fund, uh you have a pool, your investment balance or the 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 uh I'm sorry, um your your portfolio. Uh, your portfolio is based on the the value of the stock market, right? So when the markets are high, your net pension liability to pay off all those employees flow. And so this was measured at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, uh good stock market performance at June thirtieth, twenty-three. So a a significant jump or significant decrease uh in the net pension and OPEB liability. We'll expect a similar decrease for twenty twenty-five year and for twenty-six year because the twenty-six year will be measured was measured uh this past last week. So and the market hit a high last week. So uh so we would expect those to continue to step down in both twenty-five and twenty-two-six. Uh, the next slide is just revenues versus expenditures, and this is all governmental funds. See revenues is the green line, about seven point four million dollars. That's a six point two percent increase over the prior year. Again, that four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of ARPA funds, you know, buoyed that a little bit. Um, then the expenditures right at six point four million, about five point nine percent over the increase over the prior year. And uh you had about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand expenditures in urban renewal, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of capital improvements. So uh you really see that uh there's a some some good expenditures in that fund. Um, so that's a right at about a one million dollar gain or a net income, if you will, um this year compared to right at about the same number of one oh nine last year. Next slide is just revenues by source. Oh, that's interesting. Something missing. Um, the top line should say revenues right at seven point four million dollars. Uh, tax revenue at two point eight million dollars, and there's a slight decrease in that uh due to uh some of the TIF tax revenues being lower this year. That might be a timing issue. I'm not exactly sure why uh those were lower this year. So we're going to look at that again next year. Uh, but all of your other property tax, uh your uh your motor vehicle tax, uh most of those all increased. So um the franchise tax, you know, utility, all those increased. Licenses permits at two point six million dollars, about a nine point seven percent increase. The intergovernmental at seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, that's about a three and a half percent increase. That's uh your uh your ARPA funds that were recognized. That all runs through that account. Uh, the next slide is expenditures by department. So total expenditures of six point four million dollars, about a five point nine percent increase. Uh, the police at one point six million dollars, about a six and a half percent increase. Uh, firing EMS at one point one million, about a three point two. Uh, professional services right at a million dollars, uh about a seventy-five percent increase. And uh a lot of that were TIF fund, um professional services, things that you did in the TIF fund. And then uh the Orleans development for the Ramey Building, some of those, I think that was about a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars. So that uh that bumped up those professional services as well. And then a capital outlay about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars this year, uh compared to about seven hundred and sixty-six thousand last year. So a little less in capital outlay this year than last year, which is normal. You 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 do that in cycles generally. These next couple of slides are just uh some annual comparisons, kind of going back five years. So like police expenditures for five years, and you can see right there about a four hundred thousand dollar increase, but not uh not a dramatic increase year over year. Uh, fire expenditure is the same way. For the next slide, about a three point two percent increase in the current year. Public Works expenditures, they tend to jump around a little more. Some things get quite, they get classified as as pub as capitalized assets and some things as public work. So this this slide kind of jumps around a little bit. It's a little hard to quantify. And then the last slide uh should be your general government expenditures, uh about a thirteen percent increase at seven hundred and eighty-one thousand over the last few years. We did provide uh city council with uh copies of the financial statements. I know there's one correction that you pointed out that we'll make and we'll send you a we'll we'll want to correct. It's it's a small correct, a number in the notes. Um, it's a percentage on uh the uh
Potomac.
On the Potomac um TIF. And we'll uh we'll uh, the percentages were incorrect on that, so we'll update that and send that out. Thank you for for catching that. We appreciate that.
No problem.
And um but um and then you also should have received a governance letter at some point. And so it's a letter from us to you. And um that really concludes our presentation. Are there any questions or is there anything that we can answer about the financial statements or this process?
Actually, um, well, first on the fire truck lease or the fire truck note. I know this is this is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four statement. Uh, that was paid off earlier this year out of the uh
Okay.
From the fire department.
Thank you, yeah.
So that relieves us of that. That was the Potomac point. One of the issues I always have, I'm not an accountant, um but reading our budget every month is it seems very conflated because we put in grant restricted funds. So if it's a eighty-twenty, uh we've got, you know, five million dollars in our in our operating budget and then our, uh you know, and have it expected to be repaid once the project is done. And then we have to also allocate our twenty percent. Looking at the way that we do our books, would it be wise to separate out those grant restricted funds into a separate fund? For tracking purposes mostly, because some of some of the grants, by the time they come through, uh with the delays, the price has gone up.
Sure. Uh, you're not wrong to do it that way. Um, and that is a good way to manage things, you know. I personally like funds uh because they're self-balancing entities, if you will. Uh, you know, like your municipal road aid, that's all of your municipal road aid cash in. Municipal road expenses out, so it's a good way to manage that. It's in it's in a silo, if you will. So we we think we like a fund. Um, you know, your uh, these guys' opinion might be slightly different to have a separate fund for that. Might make things more complicated for them. Um, but uh, you know, that's something that, again, that's kind of where having an accounting function on a regular basis could manage something like that within your city.
Right.
You know, and and answer that, help answer that question for you. So I'll kind of throw it back a little bit, but uh you can understand what I'm saying. I but yes, uh a separate fund would help manage that better. Um, the only issue in a separate fund, you really have the same problem is if you have four grants in one fund.
Right.
You know, you still can mix and mingle four grants among one fund. It would be easier to track in one.
I'm just looking at the total budget number that we have. It's really gone up quite a bit.
Sure.
Percentage-wise, but a good bulk of that is these grant restricted funds that were either, you know, they're in progress, let's say. So it looks like the city's spending a ton more money. In actuality, we are, but they're capital capital improvements.
There, uh, this might be, this might not be the best forum to talk about this, but there is on your balance sheet places to put, you know, um, on page twelve of your balance, if you want to open it up and look at. Um, there's places to put committed, assigned, restricted, committed funds.
Okay.
Um, and it it's just the balance of of those, so assets minus the liabilities.
Right.
And that's the, you know, the net asset or the, you know, the equity fund. But it will but it will show you what's restricted for this particular this particular thing. And and you can use those separations in your uh in your trial balance. You can set up, you know, committed committed or assigned um amounts of your total uh fund.
I was just asking for your opinion on it, if it was better to do it that way.
There are multiple ways of doing it, and I just think, like, the way I I would like, you know, I would like it done a nice, pretty clean way that's always really easily identifiable, where what might be convenient for the people who actually have to work with it every day might like something like.
Gotcha.
And so that's where I don't really want to answer that question exactly, because, you know, what I what I want and what they want might not always might not always jive, because, you know, I always want something to be as clean and pretty as possible. And they and for them, it might be easier if it's all in one, you know, one in one fund or type.
I'll dig into it with staff. I was just asking your opinion on it, that's all.
There is, there's no wrong way other than not not managing.
Thank you.
Good question, though. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I have a question, uh a couple of quick ones. Um, and it's less about the content and more about just general relationship with uh with your turn with your firm. Uh, what are the contract terms with your firm currently for doing audits?
The contract terms?
Yeah, so well, how how long are we?
We do an an, we do an annual contract.
Annual contract?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a a max term that we can have with you before we need to switch auditors?
Um, quite honest, oh, no, there's not a max, like a maximum noun term, but you you're not required to change auditors.
Okay.
At all. Um, in fact, that's uh probably um ten years ago, let's say fifteen years ago. Uh, the uh, the PCAOB, who manages uh public accounting um for large corporations, made a suggestion to that every fir- every but every uh publicly traded company should switch auditors every five years. And um they quickly, they quickly backtracked on that because that was their leading source of audit failure was um was auditors who didn't understand the entity having to switch auditors continuously. So it was a really bad way of managing an audit. What we do to get around that is uh we change audit seniors every so many years. So the person who's in here running the work will be different than the person uh every so many years. You know, the the so, you know, maybe five years ago was a different. So that's um, so that's how we get around that to being where we audit. And then I'm around for continuity, so I understand the things in the back of the financials, the notes and say, yes, I know what that TIF is. I know how that works. And and that's usually the way it works, and then you get a new senior auditor every so many years. Uh, the other problem you might have is there are very few firms that sort of, so when you go looking around, you'll find that out.
Yeah.
That's why I'm just saying it's it's true.
Yep. Uh, and then my next question is, um, this looks like it took about thirteen-ish months um from the time that the financials closed. Is that typical?
No, no. Um, we, so we were done with this in late May, I believe, is was kind of when we finished it. Uh, some of that was me. I was out of town for a little bit, really probably could have been late April if it weren't for me. Um, but um the uh the difficulty we had in performing the audit for all the adjustments, that was really the issue. That that was the delay. Then we don't start on yours until later because uh our assumption was that these things were going to be adjusted for us, someone was going to have these adjusted, and then we would start the audit in mid-December, I think it was, something about that timeframe. And we came in and it wasn't like we expected. Put it blunt.
Okay. Uh.
Most generally, to to answer that question more succinctly, generally, most of our audits occur somewhere between September and December. Very few audit reports for June thirtieth, especially our municipal governments going out much later.
Okay, so would you expect a similar turnaround time or a more normal turnaround time for next year?
For this coming year?
This past fiscal year.
I'm I'm hoping for a a quicker turnaround time. And and like I said, hopefully with what uh Jay and Jared and Tristan, what they're doing to um improve with the uh with your consultant account, hopefully that we can get.
Perfect. Uh, other than that, I really liked uh all the information you provided and the way it was presented, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Good questions. I appreciate it. Thank you for caring.
Anybody else? John, I appreciate your uh keeping us uh keeping us.
John, I appreciate your keeping us keeping us on the right side, and thank you for your time tonight, man.
Thank you very much, Mayor, appreciate it.
Take care, sir. Next up, we have city engineer Mike Jaeger, who's going to be speaking on the ongoing and upcoming public capital improvement infrastructure projects right here in the city of Dayton.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike Jaeger, I'm with Compass Infrastructure Group. I'm the face city engineer, but we've got forty-five other people that that are here working for the city day in and day out, just depending on what what's coming up. But happy to be here and provide some updates. I think one thing with the grants that's good news is finally get some of these things moving. So we're getting very close to really the three largest grants that are on the books with Riverfront Commons and Dayton Pike. So hopefully you won't have that issue again, but also we hope that we do run into that issue again because we've submitted a couple more grants and waiting to hear back in October for the next round, so.
What got them moving?
Yeah.
What got them moving all of a sudden through KYTC?
Just persistence, I think, and and just jumping through all the hoops that a lot of times the the federal money is is it's great because you get eighty percent of it funded and you can stretch stretch your budget and get more things done. But there's a very lengthy process that you've got to go through all the hoops and it's just staying on top of it and making sure that ours is the higher priority over at the other hundreds that they've got to deal with, I think.
I I think the answer is the team. The Jay Fosses of the world, the Mike Eggers of the world, the people that we have pushing Dayton down in Frankfurt. And I've been with you guys on trips down there, we go down there, we we meet with these people and we talk to them and say, hey, do you know what we're doing up here? That's, you know, Mike Mike is humble when he says the word persistence, but he is persistent. And so is our team, so that that's the answer to your question, sir, is the team.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate them.
We can go right in. So first slide up here is it's going to be led as one project, but but phase two was led, it's probably been three years ago now, and the budget came in over budget, it was done by a different firm. So that's one of the first things we started to work on was redesigning that after talking with contractors to figure out why those prices were so high. So value engineering that that middle section, phase two, and then at the same time, we start on phase three and using those lessons learned from phase two to get that to where it needed to be. So those are, actually, it's on the agenda for tonight, so assuming we get a positive vote on that, what will happen is we'll sign the document, send it down to Frankfurt, and then as soon as they sign it, then they turn around and give us authorization to go out to bid for construction. So we've got those bid documents and plans ready to go as soon as we get the authorization, we've got the dates set, and we'll have it have it back. Hopefully, the I guess the proposals come in under budget like we've been seeing here recently, and and we can start construction. So if all that happens, we'll we'll start this fall and have a a timeframe of around May for completion, but it could be even sooner than that. All that in mind, we've got the river comes up and down, so we've got to, you know, work around that schedule too. So it all depends on what Mother Nature does, but we're very excited that this one is is ready to get going. And so the other one is we submitted two grant applications to OKI in June. Both also related to Riverfront Commons, so one would be to redo the upper trail on on the levee itself. And instead of just resurfacing that, it would also widen that out and also provide connectivity down close to the Mary Ingalls End, down to the road network. The other one is to do the connector from the upper trail down to the lower trail at the Berry Street Connector. And so those both were submitted, it's difficult to see there, but they're both SNK projects. The tricky part is that they had ten applications and nineteen, they totaled in nineteen million, nineteen million dollars in total, and they've got seven million dollars available, so it's it is a very competitive process. A lot of times, I know they don't like the award too, so really fingers crossed, hopefully we get one or the other, and they may even come back and ask ask us what what the priority would be. So that will be announced early in October. Sometimes they'll let you know what the rankings are late in September, so we're a couple of months out from finding that out, but fingers crossed that we get get some more money put towards Riverfront Commons. That's the just scenario view of what the, I think everyone's familiar with what what that upper path looks like. And it you can see it gets used every day, so it just, if we can get that widened out, I think it'll just really enhance that and even get get more more frequent use out of it. And then the connector there, Berry Street is there at the bottom right of your corner corner of the screen. And so we've got all the developments planned, but there is an easement that was well thought out and planned for that that goes in between the development. And then once we get down there, the one thing I do want to point out is this would be ADA accessible as well. So that's why it kind of chases so far, it's not a direct shot, it's a pretty steep drop off. So generally, that's what that path would look like, so that we can get ADA accessibility down to the lower path. The other good news is resurfacing bids, and so the city has been very strategic with this as well. So ever since I've started, we've done a joint resurfacing contract with Bellevue. And just in general, the more larger projects you get, the the lower the unit cost you get for pricing. So it's it's another way the city's been stretching their resurfacing budget. The way we set this up was we we had kind of some streets prioritized and just in case the the budgets came in high and 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 we're very excited that they didn't come in high, so we're able to to get all those. So the list of all the streets that we'll we'll do is is there on the left. Also there on the right, just to point out, O'Fallon between Sixth and Ninth is included. And so the the city boundary between Bellevue and Dayton is right down the middle, so that's in there also, and it's split right down the middle, and so that will be done as well, but but fifty-fifty match on the costs. The one section of this, and then we can go to the next slide too, is the Kentucky eight X reroute. And so this is something that been in the works for a while now, so the stretch, we want to get Kentucky eight X away from the school, especially with the new stadium being built and just all that additional traffic. So we've been coordinating with KYTC on that. Part of that deal was they agreed to it, but they had just resurfaced the existing A-dec, so they wanted to do a swap and make sure that the city resurfaced that and put put that in good shape before they took it over. And so that is included in in our scope of work, and that'll that'll be done. It's gone out of the district office, so it's down in Frankfurt to get the official order signed there. But they're confident that they'll be able to get all the signs and everything updated before school starts. So that's in the works, and they, the latest update this week is that they feel confident that that the signs will be able to be updated before school starts, so excited about that as well. Dayton Pike, so there was a pretty significant sinkhole on the street that had surfaced, just the the water district has had problems out there for quite some time. It was leaking and shout out to council and shout out to Rick and his crew to make sure Water District knew about it. And even though they've got a project that's going to start here in a few weeks, they went out and and fixed that because it was it was a pretty serious issue. But with this sidewalk project that we've got, we wanted to make sure that the Water District came in and and fixed their issues so that we didn't come in and build new infrastructure and then have them come in and have to tear it out when there's another break. So that's it's kind of pushed this project back a little bit. But I think in the end, it was the right way to do it and and get everything done correctly. So their design is good, they, even this week, so they're on track where the the water main work is going to start in August, and it's going to take about two months for them to get done. We are really pushing for the sidewalk project to be ready to go right as soon as they're done and roll right into that. I will point out that there's going to be some closures on Dayton Pike during the water main installation just because it's right up in the middle of the road, so it's not like we can keep traffic traffic on one side or the other. So one of the big things that we've coordinated with Northern Kentucky Water District is we've got to have a very clear and safe detour route, and that we've got to have plenty of notice to get out to the residents. So as a contractor selected and we know timing and and what that detour is exactly going to be, we'll get that out so that we can make sure that we blast that out and and people don't get caught off guard with that. With Dayton Pike, the design is done. What we call disturb limits is how far out the construction actually goes. It's a lot of times, it's it's the grade work, but as you're going up Dayton Pike, the sidewalk's going to be on the right-hand side and connect. They've, we've got some pretty steep driveways over there already, so when you flatten that out for the sidewalk, it it makes that a little bit steeper. So in order to prevent cars from scraping and things like that, some of those driveways are going to have to be regraded out as well. So it's it's what's called a temporary easement. But where where we are right now is is prime. I think this week is going to get me the plans that have the disturb limits marked so that I can start going out and knocking on doors and letting folks know exactly what the impacts will be, and then hopefully getting consent and release forms signed where they give the contractor the permission to get on their property to do that and redo the driveway. So that's the last piece we have on the sidewalk project. And then once that's done, we can submit everything to KYTC for approval and get that ready to go out to bid, hopefully right behind the water main work. And then Grant Park Stormwater Project, so this is, it's a it's another success that I think the city should be proud of. Jay worked on this for for a long time with the Homeowners Association, and so if you've been out there, there's, you know, some pumps and things weren't tied in, groundwater was constantly pumping up out of the street in in the curb line. And then in the winter months, it was just like an ice skating rink out there. So we did kind of, I guess it was just, we didn't do the whole street, just so we did a a small section of the road just to show that it would work. So I don't know if you've been out there, but as soon as the the new piping system, under drains were installed, the very next week, it rained, and two days later, you got there, and the curb lines were wet everywhere except exactly where the pipes were installed. I mean, it was like clear as day, exactly, it did exactly what it was supposed to do. So I think we can use that model for one, two, to continue that on in other areas. And now, like, when new subdivisions are put together, that's why the subdivision racks are the way they are, and put those edge drains and under drains in just for that very reason, to prevent that happening. So that also was a grant with SD one, so it's fifty-fifty match, so another good way that the city extended their budget to get another very important project taken care of. Seventh Avenue Hill Slide, so this is one, the road's in really, really poor shape, and it's just all because of the landslide that's taking place there towards the dead end of Seventh Street. We, a couple of years ago now, with the municipal road aid, there's a couple of different ways you can take the money. You can either get a set amount, or you can take a little bit of a lesser amount, and then you're eligible for emergency funds. And so we knew this was coming up, so we we did, we took that lesser amount, and then we're able to use that to parlay that in to get the money needed to do the design and geotech, geotechnical investigation to do their retaining wall. So the design and everything was paid for with that extra emergency funds, it's there. The difficult part is it's, you know, it's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar construction project, and so we're knocking on doors and looking for any kind of grant funding we can, any kind of funding source to to get that paid for because it's such a steep price tag. So it's ready to go, we're thinking about CDBG funding, we're talking to elected officials, looking for any and any source of revenue we can find to get that done, but it's it's ready to go once we find the funding. And then just a parlay on the Gildan Park, it's going to be the four pickleball courts out there by the basketball court. And then the the, again, the the bud, the cost came in, quotes came in low, so we were able to get the resurfacing included as well. This is the schedule Jay just provided, so it looks like on Monday, the they're going to start the excavation. And then we've got a few weeks of of install, and then there's a process, you've got to wait four to five weeks before you put that final coating on, just you've got to let the pavement settle before you can do that. So they're going to drive the basketball court towards the end of the month, and then another month later, they'll they'll be able to to paint the pickleball court. So that was another good success story here recently that glad that the prices came in the way they did. Seventh Avenue Stormwater Project, so there's a proposed development a little bit further, I guess, west on Seventh Street. And then there on the right of the screen, there's an alley that goes down, and it just takes a sharp ninety. It's a area where water ponds regularly and it kind of get in the people's backyard that live there on the north side as well. So that the developers got plans to do a detention basin behind the property there. And so originally, we had looked at putting in some new inlets and piping and and tying into the combined sewer system. But now that we know that they're putting in the detention detention basin, we can put in new inlets and pipe it straight to their detention. But this is another one too where we've got to wait until they do more work. We don't want to come in and redo the alley and put that stuff in and then have the heavy coming in and out and tearing it up. So the latest I heard on that is if they could still start this year, and then as soon as they get their facilities in, this will be another fifty-fifty match with SD one to get the new piping in and then also redo that that alley and make that more of a usable roadway network. And Third and Walnut, that is where we've got other significant flooding happening, just everything runs down Walnut Street. It used to just pond over in the grass area, and when the development came in, it just dumped everything into that property there on Third and Walnut. We're going to put two, it's hard to kind of see, but just on the south side of Third Street, there's going to be two new storm inlets that are going to be installed that'll catch all that water before it gets down there, take that into the system and keep it from getting into her home and causing the flooding. And so that's also a fifty-fifty match with SD one, but recently, they changed their guidelines, and then they've got different criteria, and so if if it's a really serious situation now, they can fund above fifty percent. And so this one has a very good chance of being funded a hundred percent. So there may may be no match for the city at all, and it could be completely a hundred percent SD one on on their dime. So fingers crossed, there, I think we've got a good shot that 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 may happen too, and that would be a huge. Riverpoint, this is a similar issue that we've got too, where we've got really significant icing issues in the winter. And so this is going to basically install a new storm inlet in the street, a yard drain in the yard, and then it's new piping will take that water down over the hill just so it it collects and doesn't sit in the winter cause that same same icing icing issue, and this is another fifty-fifty match with SD one. Okay. And then this is a newer one, so there's another connection up to the trail, and this is its second and main. And so this one is one that our survey crew has got scheduled now to go out and just, we need to mark the the property corners just so when the contractor comes in, our annual concrete maintenance contract knows how to get that path for there without without clipping their property line. So this is another one that that'll be completed this year, but it'll provide connectivity to the to the street grid from the from the upper trail on the levee.
So the city owns strip there, they can touch already?
Yeah, so there's there's a swath of right-of-way behind the the properties there on on Second, and then there's Main, like, can you pronounce them, it's like a paper, but it's it's all it's all city right-of-way. Yeah, it it could, and then we may put a little pipe in there too, just for drainage, yes, it'll it'll tie all of that in.
That's it?
I think that's it, so.
That's it? Now go on for another half hour, Mike, come on.
Sorry.
I can, I.
I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're, I I'll have to take back and see what how that line, I don't remember how that. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Let's let's talk about it before I'm called.
I'm looking at all these projects you just listed, and this is the stuff we've been waiting on for years.
Correct.
That's great. With the new stadium down here and all the construction going on, Rick, I think you were involved with the discussions with the school district. Mike, I don't know if you were, about repaving Third Street. Mike, I don't know if you were, about repaving Third Street. Is the school district gonna be repaving Third Street?
We've repaved it eight, nine years ago. They said it could be done, but I don't know, I mean, contractors are.
Okay, cuz. To repave that block.
That would be a lot of.
Yeah, cuz they gotta repay, they gotta put paving down for their two new parking lots anyway. And then on Clay Street, between Third and Fourth, there's now a gap about this much from where they put the sidewalk in, out to the street. Right now it's behind the fence, but I'm presuming they're gonna fill that in too?
I would think so.
Okay. Because they're talking about, you know, the grand opening a month from now. And there's not many pieces left down there to stadium to put together, it looks like they're about done. So I just wanna make sure before the contractor pulls out that that's taken care of.
The other thing, if they are gonna cover it or be responsible, they could piggyback on your resurfacing project and use the same contractor. And I'm sure they'd get better pricing doing it that way, so it's worth having that conversation too.
Thank you.
Question?
Any questions for Mike?
All right, thank you.
Now, that's extensive, man. You guys do a lot of great work for the city of Dayton, really appreciate it. Yeah, we're just years ahead of where we were before, like Councilman Neary was saying, so appreciate your work.
Yeah, thank you all.
That's the end of presentations. We'd like to now open up the podium for anybody who'd like to come from the public and make conversation, questions, comments, concerns with city council administration on things that are on tonight's agenda. So this is again, for the ordinances and resolutions that are on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to address those currently. So the podium is yours if you'd like so. Come on, Will, you know you want to.
There's another public comment section at the end.
That's it? What's that?
Are you looking for comments from citizens?
From anybody, if it regards the ordinances that we're going over this evening. If it's just a general conversation, then will that tell towards the end?
Oh, I might be out of order here then.
Well, let's not keep you out of order, what's it regarding?
Well, a lot of things.
There's probably a lot of order.
A lot of you don't know who I am. I've lived in the city of Dayton for forty-eight years. I've probably paid the city over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in taxes since I've been living here. So if you'll give me a few minutes. When I first moved to Dayton, it was a town where you really didn't have to leave town. You had everything you needed in this town. It'll be the same way. And probably in nineteen eighty, things started to change. We had a Kroger store in Dayton. We had two drugstores in Dayton. We had two banks in Dayton, we had a post office in Dayton. We had chiropractors in Dayton, we had dentists, we had doctors in Dayton, we had a hospital in Dayton. And over a course of time, things have changed. Now, I'm really happy with the way this city's starting to move now. You know, I think the big thing we had to get started was a flood wall. Because this building probably wouldn't even been here if this flood wall hadn't have been built, probably been underwater.
Well, certainly.
So things had to be done. I think the way this started, I think Gilman was mayor at that time. So I know bonds had to be taken out, houses had to be purchased, moving expenses had to be paid and in order to get this flood wall built. The guy lives around the corner from me, his wife works at the law firm that was in charge of all the legal work. And a gentleman from South Korea, I believe, was, how does a guy from South Korea find out about Dayton, Kentucky? Anyway, he was gonna, he was gonna start developing the flood wall. And then with these, infrastructure and the sewer region, there was a lot of going on there and he pulled out. So now it's getting developed, so, but a lot of concessions had to be made in order to get this flood wall built. And usually it has to do with taxes. But anyway, we got it done. It's, and the city's a lot better off because of that. The property values have gone up. You know, we were able to build this new high school down here and a beautiful football field, which we couldn't have done before. So anyway, like I say, concessions had to be made, but we're picking it up on the back end, correct? I don't think the city really wrecked, really got anything for the property back there. Am I correct on that as far as money?
Behind the flood wall?
Yes.
That was forty years behind my time.
Okay, well, I, in order to get that developed, like I said, things.
Oh, the current one?
Yes.
No, we, we didn't give any money.
Right, but you're making it up on the back end with taxes and everything, correct?
Well, it's a TIF program, and truthfully, sir, and you asked about keeping it right in order, that would be later comments tonight.
Okay.
This is, this.
Okay.
This time is typically set for people who wanna address the three ordinances that we have to speak this evening.
Okay, I'll step back and then I'll come back up as I.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
So does anybody from the audience like to just discuss the ordinances that we have on the agenda for the evening? Not, all right, we'll go ahead and move right along. First is a second reading, so this is a second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three. Ms. Klein, please.
An ordinance amending chapter fifty of the City of Dayton Code of Ordances titled Garbage to reflect changes to the city's solid waste removal and recycling policies as a result of the city's new solid waste and recycling contract with Rumke of Kentucky Incorporated.
Do we have a motion to accept the second reading of order twenty twenty-five dash three?
I'll make that motion.
Remember, Neiman's made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Remember, oh, I didn't know which one it was, we'll go ahead, remember Horton? Any conversations, questions?
Thank you for updating this. And it's interesting to watch between Bellevue and Dayton, that distribution of garbage cans. That was like a concentrated war effort there, putting them all out. And I see people starting to try the recycling that were against it before, so huge step forward. And I know this ordinance includes having to have lids on your garbage cans. And I know it's gonna be a load for code enforcement to ramp that up, but much appreciated getting that updated.
I guess, just a general comment, in the prep materials, I didn't see where there was a red line version at all for this, for this item. Did I miss that somewhere?
Yeah, I had the same question this morning. So instead of redlining it, he has amended and appealed the entire ordinance and put this one forward, so that's why there's no red.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next on the docket, Order Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one four fourteen, Pete Rose, here's that name again, Romeo. Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to construct Phase Two and Phase Three of the Riverfront Commons Rivers Edge Hiking and Biking Trail in an amount not to exceed two million thirteen thousand nine hundred and four dollars, eighty percent of which is payable from a federal SINK grant and twenty percent of which is payable from the city of Dayton's Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Twenty-Six Capital Improvement Fund.
So we've had, we have a motion to accept twenty twenty-five dash fourteen Romeo.
I'll make the motion to accept twenty twenty-five fourteen R.
Member Kelly's made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Member Lovins has made a second, which opens up for comments, questions, concerns?
What should we do on this, Mr. Weber?
I'd say yes, just follow Bill's before Thomas.
So do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
No, I think it's great that this is finally, thanks to you for being persistent on it, thanks to Mike and your firm and administration. This is great to finally get this started.
It is the team.
It is the team.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
And just one clarifying comment, these funds have already been set aside, correct?
Yes, they're in the budget.
Yep.
Anyone? Anyone? Roll call, please, Ms. Klein.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously. That's big. Next up, Order Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen Romeo. Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Miracle of Kentucky and Tennessee Playgrounds in the total amount of two hundred thousand to supply and install playground equipment at Gilman Park, one hundred thousand of which is payable from the city park tax and capital improvement funds and one hundred thousand of which is payable from a contribution to the city of Dayton, from the city of Dayton Independent Schools.
Do I have a motion to accept Order Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen Romeo?
Make a motion to accept.
Member Horton's made his motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Member Lovins has made a second, so time for comments, conversations, and questions.
I have a few slides to go over for this project. So like she said, the playground, which there's a photo of it here, the total cost is two hundred thousand dollars. The city put out an RFP asking vendors what they could do for two hundred thousand dollars. We received a hundred thousand dollars from Dayton Schools, sixty thousand is gonna come from the general fund and forty thousand is coming from the park fund, which is all in our budget. It was placed in a competitive bid process cuz it's over forty thousand dollars. We received four bids and they had two designs each, so we had eight different designs to choose from. The city staff met with the schools and this was the one that was by and far the best. Tristan and I have also worked with this company in our former city, so we know how they operate and we were very impressed with what they showed us before, so we were happy that they were awarded the bid for this project. If you do decide to approve this tonight, this will be on the September schedule for them. So it'll be after school starts, but that's as soon as that they can get to it because they have several other cities in line already. Here's another photo of it. So we're planning on taking out all the equipment that's currently down there in all four sections and replacing all four of them completely. This will have a set for large or older children, so usually four to twelve. And we have a three-story tower, which is gonna be the main section of the playground. And then there's a section for the smaller kids, which are usually up to four years old. And then we have a larger swing set and then two kind of play structures as well, for a total of five different structures. Instead of separating them out into four different mulch sections, these will all be combined into one. At first, we're gonna have mulch down, but we are applying for a grant that we feel that we're very likely to get. That will put pour-in-place rubber surfacing down, but that will be the year after it goes in. Another photo of the side, it has twelve total slides if you're curious. Mayor Baker wanted, and the community also had concerns about disability, people with disabilities and wheelchair accessibility. So there are several different portions of it that are specific to that. This company specializes in that as well, so they're well-versed in it. And so each structure has wheelchair capabilities. And this is the swing set for handicapped children, we'll have two of those. This dome climber is also a handicap accessible and then this spinner is also a handicap accessible. And then there's also a communication panel for children or people that have communication issues. So these were all also priorities of the school system for their special needs students as well. So if you have any other questions, just let us know.
The color scheme shown there of green and blue, is that the color scheme we're gonna go with?
Yes.
I like it.
Just a question about the September start date, is there a complete date for?
They said it will take three weeks.
Three, okay, and just to kinda get in front of things with daylight savings time, are we going in with football season going on? And Gilman Park's probably gonna be the epicenter soon of, you know, activities in Dayton. Have we thought about lighting and access at night and is it gonna be in conflict with the pickleball potentially? If people are playing pickleball at night at nine, eight, nine o'clock at night with daylight savings? And will the access be the same granted to the parks?
This playground set, as you walk into Gilman, will be on the right-hand side. The pickleball courts will be on the left-hand side as you go into the entrance, so they shouldn't overlap whatsoever. There is lighting in the park right now around the play structures that are currently there. We may have to move those around, but there will be lighting for this. Another point to make is that this company wants all of the structures to be see-through. So there's no opaque panels on any of it. So if a police officer shines a flashlight at night, they're gonna be able to see through the entire thing and be able to see if anyone's sleeping in there or if someone's in there that shouldn't be. Yes.
Who's gonna be doing the demo work on this, on the existing?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay. I'm just worried about, wondering about the loading on public works.
Yeah, certain sections of the current equipment will be have, will have to be taken out completely, including the concrete footers. But the sections that are more on the west end, they'll just be able to cut them off at ground level and they will not have to dig up the concrete because this is really going to consolidate all the equipment in a much smaller area.
So all of the equipment that's down there now will be gone?
Correct.
Thank you.
And during the construction, it'll be cut off because I can see like football season going and we have football games going on down there and they're doing construction down there, it will hopefully be visible, not visibly, but.
Fenced off.
Fenced off, yes, where people can't get there.
Yeah, so we've made great pains of keeping the entire park open as these projects have went on. So we make it clear to the contractors that they are to stay within the area and that the park will remain open.
And I think it'll be our job as city council and public officials to, you know, let the residents know to stay away. I mean, I think that'll be easy, I was just asking for general knowledge.
Yeah, it'll be fenced off and I'll have caution tape and all of that good stuff.
Circling back to the handicap accessibility, if, I assume this is a raised platform, this is gonna be, with mulch in it, is that correct?
Yes.
How would the access to get into the facility to begin with before getting onto those ramps?
So the way that we currently have it, it has a small plastic barrier around it and there is a wheelchair accessible entry point as part of that short wall that's around it. Once that gets taken away in the pour-in-place, it will be completely level with the ground.
Perfect, thank you.
Good question. Do we have any other questions? We have a motion by Member Horton and a second by Member Lovins. One quick clarification, I appreciate Jared saying that it was my assistance on the handicap accessible. It's just cuz I'm married to a wonderful woman who's very insistent on it and. You hear what Jared just said?
Yeah, it's temporary though.
Yeah.
We're gonna get there under. We're going to get there under.
Which we still have wiggle room to adjust, so.
I anticipate that meeting. Let's do it.
They built the Ludlow Playground.
They did?
This is the same company, yeah.
I try. It's a two-way street. Thanks Jess, appreciate that. Roll call please, Ms. Klein.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
The ayes have it, 100%, we are doing a lot of work tonight. Next up is Order Resolution 2025-16 Romeo, Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Eaton Asphalt in the amount of $341,303.40 for street repaving work and with Hindi construction in the amount of $91,694 for construction of ADA ramps in the city of Dayton, payable from municipal road aid funds and capital spending fund.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 2025-16 Romeo?
So moved.
Member Neary's made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kelly. Does your partner have any, anything to discuss?
Yeah, I have a map up on the screen showing where all of these streets are. Anytime streets are being repaved, I like to remind everyone that none of the council, the staff, or the administration chooses these streets. It's chosen by a third-party engineer based on a scoring system. So, the council doesn't have any input whatsoever when it comes to which streets are being repaved. So, the three factors that we look at when choosing this is coordination with utility companies, Northern Kentucky Water and Duke. If they're going to be cutting into the street at any point, we're not going to repave that street. Then, of course, the scoring system with the city's third-party engineer and then how much money we have available are the three variables that we look at.
Where are the, there's $91,000 for ADA ramps, where are the ADA ramps? Are they at the same streets?
Yes, they're on the same streets. Once we repave the streets, we have to update and abide by the ADA requirement. So those truncated dome mats and all of that have to go in.
Okay, so it's, but the ADA ramps are only going to be on these areas that are being repaved?
Yeah, as we repave a street, we also have to do the ramps associated with those streets.
Cool, thank you.
And as Mayor Baker mentioned earlier, our paving contract came in $300,000 under budget. So, we saved quite a bit of money.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? We've had a motion by Member Neary, second by Member Kelly. Roll call please, Ms. Klein.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Last on the docket would be Order Resolution 2025-17 Romeo, Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution of the City Council of the City of Dayton, Kentucky authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Campbell County Fiscal Court regarding the sheltering of animals in the Campbell County, at the Campbell County Animal Shelter.
Do I have a motion to accept 2025-17 Romeo?
I'll make the motion.
Member Kelly's made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Neiman, which opens up for conversation. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I actually have a question on Section 4.17, TNR Surgery Billing. Said TNR surgeries for animals covered by this agreement and seized by the city handler will be scheduled by the cities and paid for by the cities.
Correct.
Yeah, I knew this question was going to come up, so I've done some research. So, what to know about this agreement is that this is only the sheltering of animals. We're still contracting with the city of Newport and their animal control officer for the actual capturing of the animals. So, it is up to that animal control officer and the staff to determine if they are going to do the TNR, and that's tag and release if you're not familiar, where they potentially catch feral cats, take them, have them spayed, and then they release them back to the same location where they were picked up from. I've done research into TNR today and it is controversial, it's not. Not everyone believes that it's, works. And so, we've essentially told the animal control officer that she is not to do TNR at this time until we can further look into it. So, even though this contract does say that the city would be responsible for the TNR costs, we are not permitting the animal control officer to do that at this time.
So. So then, my understanding was that the previous trap neuter release program was paid by some benefactor who had left a lot of money to the county to do that.
It's no longer the case.
It's no longer the case. Does this mean that they will trap it, take it to the shelter, not neuter it, but bring it back to us?
I anticipate that they will, I mean, they'll capture them, take them to the shelter, and if the shelter doesn't accept them, then they'll be returned.
Yeah, I don't know why we don't, I mean, we don't do it for dogs or any other animals where they, if it's a stray, that they would take it and bring it back. I mean, that's my concern, is who's going to pay for it now? Because neutering could be a couple hundred bucks per animal.
Yeah, that was our.
Straight cats.
Right, that was our concern as well, and so we told them not to because this is not something we've budgeted for and it's not something that we've looked into enough to determine if it actually works or not.
Do we know how many neuters they did in a year's time for Dayton?
I don't, I'm planning on talking with the animal control officer to get more information on this.
All right, great.
I have a question about that, with the TNR program, do they feed them somewhere?
No.
So there's no dumping of food, so, because somebody told me that they empty out bags by the, is this not true?
I thought you meant when they were actually in possession of them.
Oh. But they're in regular public feeding of the bags?
No.
Is that true? Okay. So it's, they're sort of on their own? On the streets?
Yes.
Begging?
Heathcliff style.
Yeah. What did you read? You said that it's controversial.
It's controversial, there were three organizations that supported it and then a whole laundry list of others that said it did not work and it was detrimental to the population, so.
Population of humans?
I mean, both cats and humans, yeah.
If I can interject, the feral cat problem, I don't believe, we don't, Dayton, we don't need that controversy. I mean, I've seen it happen in similar cities to where city council members get involved in this feral cat controversy and it's just one that's unwinnable. So, I personally agree with the approach that we're taking is we're just going to stay out of it until the residents come to us with it. Because if we start opening this feral cat situation in the city of Dayton, it's going to be more than we can handle, in my opinion, and I think we should just table it, leave it, and just go to the next subject. It's kind of like bringing up a swimming pool in Dayton, in my opinion.
I feel bad for them because.
Sure.
On 10th and Dayton, it's like Rome up there, I mean, they're everywhere. Now one has a big hole in it and I feel bad for them. And I thought that at least they fed them, but it's like, so these, then they beg and then people feed them and they're all literally laying all over the place. Okay.
I just wanted to get clarified if they are still going to be doing the neutering and that we have to pay for it. Since that is in this ordinance, should we table this or take a vote on it?
No, like I said, we have two separate agreements, one with the city of Newport and one with the fiscal court. The fiscal court is only sheltering of the animals. If we bring them, animals to be TNR'd, they will charge the city, but we have instructed the code enforcement, or not code enforcement, animal control officer and through that contract with the city of Newport that they are not to do that.
Thank you.
Is it still Terry Baker?
Yes.
Yes.
Does she support TNR?
She, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So if I read that correctly in the contract language, this contract will be in effect for an unspecified amount of time, but it has an annual renewal. So is this considered an annual renewal? Is this the same contract we've been signing or is this a brand-new contract?
This is different because we used to contract those animal control officer duties to the fiscal court. However, they were not timely in picking up animals. We had several issues with their enforcement, so we switched over to the city of Newport. Many residents here are familiar with that animal control officer. She has a good rapport with a lot of residents and so we chose to move over to them. So this contract is different in that the animal control officer duties have been shifted over to the city of Newport.
Okay, and so if this were to be accepted tonight, we would be canceling the prior agreement?
Correct.
By canceling the prior agreement, we would not be required to, could you repeat that one more time before we vote? We would not, it would stay in place to, we would not be financially responsible as a city to handle anything to deal with the feral cat situation?
Correct, so in order for that to happen, the animal control officer would have to go to the administration and request permission, and at this time, we're denying that.
So if we're denying that, what is the status? Are they supposed to pick them off the street like any other community and put them in a pound and they have a certain amount of time to get adopted? Is that what's going on?
That will be up to the shelter to determine if they're willing to accept them or not.
Is, are we talking about Terry Baker for all of animal control, like?
Yes.
Okay, so if we pass this, is she supposed to be coming around and grabbing cats now? Or just looking the other way?
No, she will maintain her exact same duties, nothing will change with her.
Remember that time that we had a cat problem?
Yeah, we had people up by the railroad tracks that were putting out like 10 pounds a week. And every skunk and raccoon.
Yeah.
Possum. Yeah, they were getting fat.
Yeah. There was a whole gang of them, yeah.
It's really a public health issue when it comes down to it.
Like, it still is like that.
It's the same here as in Covington, as, you know, Member Horton said it is. It ain't just us.
Yeah, I mean, residents will feed them, they feel sorry for the cats.
Sure, they have good hearts. That being said, we have a motion by Member Kelly and a second by Member Neiman. All questions, comments, concerns answered. Roll call please, Ms. Klein.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Neiman.
Aye.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
And that concludes this night's, this evening's Orders and Resolutions, which brings us up to the Department Director's monthly reports. First on the docket, we'll have Lieutenant Valment. He's like, "Yeah, me." That's why we're excited to see you, buddy.
I'm assuming everybody has a copy of our monthly report that was provided by Chief Affill before he went on vacation? Pretty much, I looked it over, everything looks pretty normal, nothing pressing it.
Dayton Summer Bash?
Dayton Summer Bash.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of this. It is coming up on the 19th of this month, it's on a Saturday from 12 to 4. I want to give a little shout-out to my Sergeant Lynn Kugel, Billy Lynn Kugel. Puts a lot of work and time and effort into this. So, really wanted to bring this to everybody's attention a little bit more, so he's always looking for, we're always looking for donations, prizes, baskets for the raffle and so forth. And of course, all the proceeds do go to the Light Up Dayton Project. So, that's a very good turnout every year for that and it does require a lot of funding. So if anybody's wanting to help out, I did leave some more flyers over there if anybody wants to pass them out or whatever. You want to help out, you can always contact Sergeant Lynn Kugel, I left his email at the bottom of there. Actually, he actually put that together. I had to tease him for a little bit about it, I know you're missing a few things, but it'll work. So, he does a great job.
Yes, he does.
He's kind of like my right-hand man, so. Any questions about Summer Bash? One thing I did want to mention, everybody's talking about grants, so we are, I had put in for the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, which partners with NHTSA for the traffic grant. Hoping that we, I'm talking to representatives from it, we are going to get some funding out of it. He did tell me I did ask for a little bit too much, but I asked for over $10,000 to see if it would help us assist with the traffic throughout the city. Different programs like Click It or Ticket, the seatbelt, there's the speed enforcement, distracted driving, and I thought they added a fifth one, but I'm not clear on exactly what that is. Actually, I took Sergeant Lynn Kugel with me to a briefing last month right before the Click It or Ticket campaign, trying to teach the youngsters the ropes, get them ready for the next step. So, speaking of them, they also help us out with equipment as well. You know, we can go in there and ask for additional PBTs, portable breath tests, or additional radars for some of the cars. They've been very helpful with us on that throughout the years, even though we weren't a member of the grant. So, probably looking at maybe, I'm going to say, close to maybe $6,000 or probably looking at getting awarded by October. And that'll be to start as a Click It or, no, I'm sorry, the DUI campaign, drive stopper, get pulled over. So, kind of where we're at, I'm always kind of trying to look around for grants. I usually bug Jared to death when I come up with one, "Hey, what do you think about this?" So that's kind of all I have for you, just in case guys have anything else.
Any comments, questions?
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. We'll see you for a little bit longer and then we'll say goodbye.
How many years you got in, LT? That's, congratulations and thank you so much for your service. Wow, that's a career, man. You're a good man, Tony. And so July 19th, if you've got some kids or if you've got some free time, come on down for Summer Bash and thank you, Billy, for putting it on. Next on the docket, we went first, please, let's go fire, Chief Schaefer, please.
Everybody has a copy of my report, a couple of highlights. 205 responses last month. As I said, training, we're just out, training every day. We do have two new guys, firefighter medic Nick Mead, he got through his orientation, so he's actually on shift. And we had a new firefighter MT Logan Nance start Monday with his orientation. He'll be going to shift, so he's out training with that. The state did come in, conduct their audit on our training records. It's an annual thing, they just pop in when they want to, so we had no deficiencies or no recommendations, which is always nice to hear. And looking forward, like I said, we had lunch at the firehouse, that was a huge success. Had to make an emergency food run there, so. Other than that, any questions?
How many runs for 4th of July? Heard a lot of sirens, a lot of fireworks, but a lot of sirens.
I don't have the specific count for that day, it was, 4th of July is always a busy weekend for us, so we try not to count. Try to not tell people to have a quiet day and we try not to count when we get done, so.
Hopefully no injuries.
Uh, there was nothing, I mean, had a couple burns, I think we did have one small garage fire, but, I mean, they lost fingers or toes or whole houses, so it was a successful weekend. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Last, but certainly not, but least, Mr. Lucas.
You know, we've probably been pretty busy so far lately.
Seen that, man. Seen that, man.
Anyway, on the playground equipment, can I try to find somebody that would take that?
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Okay. Because, I mean, there is a guy that installing equipment now. He may do it. Okay, I just wanted to double-check with you on that. I just got a message from Will. He wants me to start clearing a little bit on the riverside of the trail. But they got a project possibly going in later, and they may have another company coming down doing some work down there. I'll probably start on that, not tomorrow, but Thursday, I guess. And we'll be taking the fence down in Gillland Park tomorrow, or the pickleball courts. We'll start on that, from the girls' outfield fence down to the gate. We'll leave the gate up. We're just taking the fence down. Other than that, we've been busy. I mean, grass, it won't quit growing. The storms, I mean, yep, we're busy. If anybody's got any questions?
How many trees did you plant altogether?
At least forty. And they're all over ten, twelve feet tall. And they're up on Dayton Pike. I think we planted nine of them on Dayton Pike. Probably twenty in Gillland Park. There's quite a few of them. And we planted a lot of them.
Did you start the search for the new employee?
Uh, not yet. I mean, I got two applications, but I haven't even mentioned anything yet. It's been so busy. I mean, we're, we're pretty busy, trying to keep up with everything. Other than that, all I have is...
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Lucas. You have a great evening. Mr. Fawcett is vacationing with his family, as he does every July. So that means Mr. Barks gives the administrative report for this evening, if he so chooses.
I want to talk about Gillland Park. We had some storm damage. We just replaced the roof on those structures, and then the roof blew off literally, I think, ten days after that. We had seventy mile-per-hour winds. I met with the contractor and did my own research on how it should have been installed, and they did do it correctly. It was just a freak-nature situation. So we will be replacing that, and I think they'll be doing that this week. On June twenty-fifth, Tri-State Trails and the city combined efforts and did the pop-up bike shop for the fifth year in a row. They will repair bikes for free to the children in the community and adults. It's mostly kids, though, so we want to thank them for doing that yet again with us. I wanted to mention that the city is now street-sweeping on Route Eight, which includes Sixth Avenue, Clay, and Fourth Avenue. All of those residents along the street have been sent a letter explaining what's going to happen, and that they will be required to move their vehicles. The street sweeping is going to occur on the first and second Monday of every month, from nine AM to twelve noon. The first Monday is going to be the north side of the streets, and the second Monday is going to be the south side of the streets. We picked Monday because a lot of the restaurants are already closed, a lot of businesses are closed. And so if you hear anything about that, let us know, and we will have signage out soon on the street. Just a couple of upcoming events. Thursday, July tenth, we'll have Histories on the Square. That's a small event where Tina Nyer, a local person, will pick a subject and just do a talk about it. This Thursday is going to be Famous Daytonians, if that interests you. And then Mayor Becker mentioned that Sergeant Park was going to have their grand re-reopening on Sunday, July twentieth. The Sunday prior to that, July thirteenth, we will be hosting a volunteer day at nine AM, and that's Sunday, July thirteenth. And we're going to be preparing the park for that grand re-reopening celebration. And that's all I have.
Wait, sorry. Okay, July thirteenth is a volunteer day. What was the next one?
Thursday, July tenth, is going to be Histories on the Square.
Okay. And then July twentieth is the grand opening?
Yes.
Okay.
The re-reopening?
Re-reopening.
Is it Bob's Burger themed?
Yeah.
You will see some tie-ins there, yes.
I like that. That's good.
And the Histories on the Square is on July twen- tenth, Thursday. What are the times?
It is at six PM.
Okay.
At Monument Park.
Thank you.
Summer Bash nineteenth. Very busy weekend for volunteers, for fun.
We have a lot of events this summer going on.
And I've heard two different people, a friend that came in from town, out of town, talk about the signage that we have at the Monument Park with all the listing and stuff, and they were pretty amazed by how much we have going on. So that, that kind of signage goes a long way.
Back to the, the roof on the building in Gillland Park. Is it worth spending a little bit of extra money and getting a, a more sturdy roof this time, or are we replacing it with the same thing we got last time?
This roof is very sturdy. I'm not sure exactly what happened to cause it to come off in that way, but the wind rating is very high. It, we did actually spend more money to make it a stronger-type roof. It's not just a corrugated metal roof. It's called a stand-and-seam metal roof, which is aesthetically more pleasing and is tougher than your typical metal roofing. It caught the building at the correct angle, and it was just one of those act-of-God situations.
Okay. So based on the people you've talked with, there's nothing additional we can do to prevent that in the future?
Not that I'm aware of. We could add more bracketing, perhaps, or, which I've talked with the contractor about. It's supposed to be spaced twenty-four inches apart, but they could add more, and hopefully that would solve it.
Okay. That's exactly what I was thinking, was more bracketing, potentially. It might be worth the funds.
Any other questions for Mr. Barks tonight? You're lucky Joe's out of the room. We'll go ahead and move quickly. All right, right along, right along, right along. This is audience comments now. Sir, if you'd like to address City Council Administration on anything that crosses your mind, whether it's the red score or anything going on in the city, you're welcome to do so. If you could, though, please do me a favor, just state your name and address. That's it.
Dave Cole, three-twenty-sixth Avenue, Dayton, Kentucky. The reason I'm here tonight is I need your help. I got some concerns that are not being addressed. Okay, I told you, I lived in this city for forty-eight years. I understand we have a historic district in the city of Dayton. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Where is the, where is the historic district at?
Mainly throughout Sixth Avenue, down through Main Street, yeah.
Okay. If I was going to move into the city of Dayton, how would I know where the historic district is?
It's on the website.
No. How would I know I'm in the historic district?
Oh, you're asking like signage?
Yes.
Uh, there is no current signage that you're entering a historic district.
The reason I say that, the first thing I see when I leave Dayton and enter into Bellevue, it's a nice, big sign, Bellevue Historic District. I go up on Fallon Avenue, there's another sign, James Taylor's Daughter Historic District. My daughter lives on Berry Avenue in Bellevue. Down a block from her, another sign, Historic District. The first thing I see when I leave Newport coming into Bellevue, another nice sign, Bellevue Historic District. When you leave Bellevue on Sixth Avenue, uh, Sixth Street, Phil, going into Newport, the first thing you see is Newport Historic District. You go into Covington, you go up around Holmes High School, Wallace Woods, you go down along the, of the river, Licking River Historic District. So you know you're in the historic district. And I think that's important, because that's the history of your city. Mr. Baker, you live in the historic district.
Yes, sir.
You have a nice home there. I've been in your home before.
Thank you, sir.
But we have to, we have to recognize that. Some of the most beautiful homes in the city of Dayton are where? On Sixth Avenue. And there's other pockets of beautiful homes in the city of Dayton, not just on Sixth Avenue, up on top of the hill, Fifth Avenue. There's a lot of nice homes in the city of Dayton. Sixth Street, if you tried to rebuild those homes today, how much you think it would cost?
Couldn't. You couldn't. They, they can't recreate those things.
They're, they're one-of-a-kind homes. I don't know what we have to do. I see a lot of grants are being passed out in the city of Dayton, a lot of grants to get the business district going. You know, rents were being subsidized, money was given for signs to be put up on these buildings. What do, what do we have to do to get the, to get some signs up about the historic district in the city of Dayton?
Weekend at any point. It just takes staff time to do it.
I love the idea.
Is there any way we can work with the Transportation Department and get some, like, historic signs? Because I know I've seen that they do grants. I know Covington has done that, where they find historical places and put placards there.
We've, we've tried to do that in the past. Typically, they do that for like, you know, I'll just pick out Covington. Lucy Zest's grandson lived here. You need something of that level. Dayton, you know, we have, you know, John Wooden's house.
John Wooden?
That wouldn't necessarily address what he's saying. He's asking, like, for entrances into a neighborhood, into a, and...
Well, I live in the historic district.
Right, right, yeah. So I don't think that, is that what you're talking about, Terris?
Kind of, but I figured there would probably be, like, we could tie some kind of historic district into the program that they have for the Commonwealth of Kentucky, the Transportation Department that has the big brown placards. So yes, I am talking about that. And if I'm not mistaken, we could present to the Transportation Department, because they actively look for places to put these placard things.
You are correct. However, they are very expensive, and you have to prove historic significance to them. So you have to have the verbiage and everything ready for them. I've never seen one of those signs for historic district of homes, but we can certainly look at that to see.
I was going to say, the one thing, what you're saying with the significance, because, like, that's my day job, okay, is historic preservation.
Nice.
And, like, our district's an overlay district, so it's not actually a national register district like the Taylor Daughter. We've never gone through the paperwork of registering our district at that level. We just did it, started it as an overlay to try to get the ball rolling.
Are you, are you on the historic board in the city of Dayton?
No, not any longer. I can't, can't be as a council member.
Now, what does the historic board in the city of Dayton actually do?
Mostly what they, they do is they are working on things like that, and they have helped with other people doing nominations, you know, national register nomination forms. But mostly what they try to do is keep the feeling of the historic district, so that, you know, when you're fixing something, it's sympathetic to the neighborhood. You're not doing something, you know, wacky, which you can, because, you know, I mean, it's still your property. But you want everything to be cohesive, as you said, so that you have this nice district, so that you can, you know, get on the register with it, or at least be eligible for the register, and then, you know, which the buildings that are eligible for the register are eligible for tax grants. And then that's through the Park Service. There is some money at the state level, but it's generally not so deep-dive down into a city level.
So we're actually not moving in that direction?
I've not seen what they've been doing.
So for what do you want? Is this something that council makes a motion, we want to add to a budget, like, start looking at prices? Because...
Sure, I mean, yeah, if the council, the mayor gives us direction to the staff that you want to install new signage that says it's in a historic district, then we can certainly move toward that.
Sir, is that what you're wanting?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree with that. I'm not going to be the only one. I...
No, I agree with it. We should.
I'd like to ask councils...
Well, we don't have a historic preservation board. We did initially, what...
We have a bar.
We have a Board of Architectural Review, so that if you're in the historic district and you want to do improvements to the outside of your property, it has to be approved by the Board of Architectural Review. We don't have an entity promoting, like, like a normal historic preservation board would do. So I guess it, it would fall on administration or, I don't know, that we want to create another board.
Yeah, I mean, Covington has staff members. So, like, they actually have city staff members.
Newport does as well.
Who does, who do, you know, handle the preservation stuff.
Let me ask you this. There are guidelines for our historic district, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's basically one of the reasons I'm here. And the other reason is, I've been this gentleman here, I'm a piece of property. I've been to the code enforcement people on this piece of property next to me. Okay, when I first moved there, there was a family by the name of Sots, three-sixteen, that's the property I'm talking about. And their daughter, granddaughter, lived on the second floor. Their, their daughter was the same age as my daughter, so they became friends. I've been in that house a few times. A beautiful home. Beautiful floors, doors, woodwork. They had a nice screen-in back porch where they could go out there and sit, not have to worry about bugs. Beautiful front porch. So Mrs. Sot passed away, and her daughter, granddaughter, and her husband moved out of the second floor and got a place of their own. So Mrs. Sot's daughter, her husband didn't want the house anymore, so he sold the house. And a gentleman bought it and turned it into a piece of rental property. First thing he did is put up a fire escape and everything, but didn't have a whole lot of problems with that. But it started, this whole thing started because people would come down, the renters would come down. Now, rather than just going down three steps, taking that lid off the garbage can and putting the garbage in there and putting the lid back on, no, that was too hard. We're just going to come down, take the lids off and leave them off, and we're just going to throw the garbage over the side of the porch. So we all know what happens when you don't cover up your garbage.
Cats.
It's a stink, and you start attracting animals, raccoons, opossum, and rats. We had rats over there. So he sold the property to another guy, and this is where the problems really started. You talk about the cat problem. I've had a lot of problems with the cat problem. Then people on the first floor had fifteen cats, okay? They had a dog. They had to get rid of the dog, because the dog was eating the cats. So I went, went through the city about this problem. They direct me to Campbell County Fiscal Court. Campbell County Fiscal Court had, went with this group we were talking about just before, this bait and neuter the cats, okay? That's a nice program. The only trouble is, they bring the cats right back to where they found them, okay? So fifteen cats. I have a grill cover, and the council are going to do what councils normally do. They got to sharpen their claws. They got to climb up on my grill cover and scratch my grill cover up. The guy behind me had a cover on his car. They get up and scratch that. So these people didn't really care. The best part, the animal, Campbell County Animal Control pulls in her van in the alley behind my house and gives her twenty-five pounds of food to feed these cats. Now, went to fiscal court. They're not going to do anything from, with my problem. So I ask you, what would you do? My daughter's a personal friend with Trishy Mackey. Trishy Mackey sent us... Trishy Mackey sent a news crew over here to film all these cats. I don't think that's the kind of publicity that the city of Dayton wants. Now I finally got rid of them. Now we got another group in there. I've been to code enforcement board. Window's broken on the side. Window's broken, a door, they got four dogs, and I guarantee you, none of them dogs are registered in the city of Dayton.
We don't register dogs, sir.
Please?
We don't register dogs.
You don't, don't, in the city of Dayton, dogs do not have to have tags?
No, sir. We did away with that five years ago.
Campbell County still requires it.
Campbell County requires it, but somebody say Campbell County, what's that mean?
I believe Campbell County requires you pay a fee to the county to have your animal tagged. And I believe it's to make sure that they are, um, have had their rabies vaccinations.
So the long dog, dog gets out, they had a litter of puppies over there, and this is what's going on. Now, with the historic board, there's certain things you can and cannot do to your piece of property. Correct? Did I correct? Well, this guy owns this piece of property, could care less about us. He could care less about the city of Dayton. He lives over in Ohio, and he's not gonna do any more than he has to. It took, I've been to the code enforcement board, it took this guy one year to paint a twenty-by-twenty section on his house. The paint was flaking, it's covered over my yard. Now you think the guy, he don't care about that piece of property. The guidelines, the screened-in back porch has been torn off. Part of the front porch has been torn off. The wall fell down in front of his home. I don't know who allowed him to even put up a temporary wall, but it's a completely different wall. One part of the wall is one way, the other part of the wall is another way. I got pictures here, and I pass these around to the city council. Here is, here is all the code enforcement practice that this gentleman's had on this piece of property. I've lost my patience. That's why I'm coming to you, I should not have to come to city council. Code enforcement board should take care of this problem. I've been with you, how many times have I met with you?
I think we've met three or four times, sir.
What's our point of action? What's, what's our point of, what can we do?
So from the city's perspective, his neighbor has been fined many, many times, multiple times over. Um, code enforcement, as you know, is a very slow process. There's a lot of due process when it comes to code enforcement. This gentleman that he's referring to has paid many fines for these infractions. That is all that we can do. And so, I don't, I don't know what to do at that point. So we will continue to charge him, and that's what we're doing. And he has paid those fines up until now.
From what I understand, if you're fined for something, and you don't ca- take care of that in a certain period of time-
You will be fined again.
That fine is added on, correct?
Correct.
Is that being done?
Yes.
Okay, what I'm asking you, city council member, is to go to the code enforcement board. I wanna know what's been done since last year.
Cassie's not with us tonight, um, but she will have that information for you all.
If we are following our, um, personnel, we're still dealing with the details.
And Tristan can attest, this gentleman has paid fines.
Here's, I'm gonna tell you another thing. You, you'll love this story. I went to Campbell County Fiscal Court over this cat problem, okay? Now, like I say, they're just baiting new to the cats, but they're gonna bring it back to where I live at. Now, they told me if we take the cats out of the city of Dayton, we create a vacuum effect. Which means, what, we got cats in Bellevue and Fort Thomas just waiting to come into Dayton?
I've heard this argument. I wanna see more data on this.
I mean, that's-
There is some truth to it.
What do you think we are, stupid? So here's what I did. Since nobody's taking care of my problem. If you read some of the guidelines of Campbell County Fiscal Court, these cats are considered community cats. What does community mean? To me, community, community property. It's not private property, it's community property. So the way I look at it, these cats cannot be in on private property. They have to be kept on community property. What's community property? They have to be kept at the police station, the forest station, the parks. So what did I do? Guys, they poison them. No, I'm not gonna po- it's not the cat's fault. So what I did is I started live trapping and taking them out to Pendry Park in Silver Grove. I took them out there because Pendry is ahead of the fiscal court. Let Pendry take care of them. So I'm asking you to help me out. If this guy is being fined and he's paying the fines, then we're not fining him enough. The only thing this guy understands is getting in his pocket.
Don't we have, I, I thought we adopted a nuisance ordinance years ago.
It's one hundred dollars per day, up to five thousand dollars, and then we send them a bill, and he has paid those bills.
Yeah, he pays a lot of money.
Multiple times over.
So I, I'm asking you, council members, to come to my home. I'm not asking you to go to his house, that's private property. I'm asking you to come to my home. I wanna show you what this place looks like. He's changed the roof line in the back of the building. You cannot change the roof line in the historic district on your property.
You can in the rear of the home, you cannot on the front of the home.
I could do what, I'm sorry?
You can on the back of the home, you cannot on the front of the home.
Which doesn't make any sense.
Kentucky State statutes, it has to be in view of the street. If it's not in view of the street, then we cannot regulate it.
This is the whole problem. The code enforcement board rides around in her car, correct? If she doesn't, if she can't see from the street, then nothing's done.
That is correct unless there's a complaint from a neighboring property. I agree, but again, we cannot regulate the roof line in the back of a home. If he had changed the roof line in the front of the home, then we could.
He's changed the porch. You see the pictures there, part of the porch has been torn down.
And he has been fined for that.
Mr. Cole, I'm just, I'm just looking at some historical pictures here.
Please?
I'm, I'm just looking at historic pictures of the house. When do you say that he was, changed the roof line?
It's in the back of the house.
I'm looking at the back.
It's, it's, it's hard to see. It's right here.
This is in twenty thirteen, so you're saying this is done over twelve years ago?
See it? See how it's changed? It should come up and come down. This part here has been changed.
It was-
Windows are out, windows are out, doors, uh, there's trash that's come on the side of this building. Been there for a month.
I, I, I'm sympathizing with you, buddy. I really am. It's-
So what I'm asking is, like I said, somebody from council to come to my home. You're welcome, my home. Okay, cause you can't see this from the street.
It's often been- One of the best quotes I heard from a previous council person was that one bad person or one bad property can ruin an entire neighborhood.
It has. He owns the other piece of property where the coffee house is.
That piece of property is beautiful. That piece of property is gorgeous. But I, I would tend to agree that this house does need work.
Okay. I'm sorry I got upset.
No, no, you're not, don't, don't be sorry.
I don't want it to go to, I don't want it, my daughter to go to Trishy Mackey and send a news group.
I'll address this with, uh, code enforcement.
And I'll get back, I'll be here the next council meeting.
Okay.
This is what's been done. Okay, I thank you for your time.
That'll be August twelfth. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the podium is still open for anybody who'd like to address council, and if you would please just state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name's Don Bigger. Uh, I own the property at six thirty-eight Fifth Avenue, the old Dayton Eagles building. Shared a presentation with Jared earlier. I think he emailed it out, um, each of you. Again, I'm not gonna go through every slide, it was more just for awareness. My purpose of being here today is really, I just went through the property tax appeals process for twenty twenty-five. Raise awareness to some of the impacts it's having on businesses. And really the punitive effect particularly that it has on my, my property. So just to give you an overview of the property, if you go to the, uh, the second slide, the property details, it's the old Dayton Eagles building I purchased about five years ago. Get rehabbing it ever since, kinda taking a Johnny Cash approach, right? One piece at a time. It's a slow process, but it is, it is, uh, making progress. This was prior to any of the Burton Building purchases or any of the other, uh, development within the city. So if you see that kind of, uh, ceiling view or roof view, you see my property that's on the corner. The Burton Building's on the other cor- uh, corner, and then there's a, uh, property right next to mine as well that, uh, was assessed at a much lower value and what have you. My property for the first four years was assessed at a hundred and fifty K. Last November, when I got my tax bill, um, I had a three hundred and eighty percent increase in my property tax. One of the highest in Dayton commercial properties. There was one other property, and, and I'll share the details of, of that with you. So I'm, I'm here today, I know the appeals process runs its course, and, and I've completed that. There's one other step I can take. That's not my course of action here, it's more to raise awareness. Because as, as you drive down Fairfield Avenue, and, and if you look at what my property is, it's a single-use facility, right? It's a bar that Dayton Eagles owned it for a long time. Uh, as their membership aged, they couldn't upkeep the building. So there was a lot of maintenance that needed to occur, and obviously they moved a couple blocks away. There's no parking facilities, right? It's, it's Ubered in, and obviously with the new pizza place, um, you, you've seen the impact of that with the street parking and, and what have you. So there's limited uses, and, and that building was bypassed even by, I think, this council, right? To, to purchase as a potential, um, city building or something, or that's my understanding of it.
That's probably not correct.
Whatever the case, I think it was on the market for some time. There was plenty of opportunities for people to buy it at that purchase price at the time. So obviously, um, you know, it did have a market value or a cash, cash value fair price. So I think, um, you know, I think the, the major concerns is, uh, highlighted was more so just to, uh, demonstrate some of the obstacles you have from a business in Dayton, in that main area. So I think as you kinda go to the other slide, and as you go down Fairfield Avenue, you see a lot of vacancies right now, right? You see a lot of far lease in businesses maybe that have turned over. You know, I, I know the, uh, the Mexican restaurants probably turned over a couple times for different reasons, right? Maybe not for property tax, but, um, that could be a contributing factor to it. I think, uh, it's, it's hard for a small business to sustain, right? Particularly food businesses, the volume, the margins are low, um, and, and you're dependent on volume. So I think any impact, and particularly an egregious three hundred and eighty percent property tax impact, impacts your business. Now, you will say, well, that's a county issue, right? That's the PVA, that's Mr. Braun's territory. But the downstream impact is to the local cities. So when I hear that you're under budget and a lot of those, uh, the progress that's being made, that's awesome. I love to see the progress, I love to see the, the stadium, all that's all, all good. And, and I appreciate all your service that, that you guys do. I know you hear a lot of complaints, but, um, you, you guys are doing a lot of good stuff, and it's obviously evident, so thank you for that. But the thing I did wanna call out though is, in, in what I presented in the spreadsheets, when I went to the appeals process, I said, well, I get it, there's an increase. Even if I look at the audit that was done, um, earlier, talking about the fund accounting, I, I feel for you, cause I, I understand fund accounting and restricted gifts and, and trying to gauge that, so, uh, completely feel your pain there. But when, when you look at, like even your increase, what was it, six point two percent? Or two point eight million of property tax revenue, if I, if I heard that correctly on, when he was reading the audit statements or when he had the graphs? You had about a six point two percent increase year over year. That's understandable. Everybody would expect some level of increase in their property tax. Three percent, maybe cost of living, whatever. But three hundred and eighty percent, that's egregious. So I think when I tried to, you know, take a step back, um, and obviously go into my appeal process, I looked at different properties. The most logical one was the Burton Building, right? That building was purchased for three hundred and eighty-five thousand, two years after mine. It's about the same square footage. So logically, you could look at that and get a square footage price, and you should be able to apply that across the board, at least on that street or in the neighborhood, to get a comparable. Now, my building is unique, right? It is the, the old Dayton Eagles building. It's a ten thousand square foot building. Did a lot of, uh, improvements on the interior. But ultimately, it was hard to find comparables, even when I, uh, engaged an independent audit, uh, to, to do an appraisal for my appeal. So I guess my point is, is, and, and if you look at the forty properties that I did the analysis on, and I think the spreadsheet that, um, that was maybe emailed. When I got my, uh, property evaluation, obviously I went to the, uh, PVA website and was able to do my own research and identify forty different properties. Within the scope, I used a, a scope of anything that was material, fifty thousand or above, right? And in general, what surprised me is, if you look at the square footage price of each of those properties in that Excel file, you would think that a county PVA would have a logical program that would have key KPIs and drivers that would automatically give you a square footage price. Now, I'm not talking about the businesses that are in it, right? That's irrelevant. I mean, you, you could argue that it's relevant, but that goes, that doesn't stay with the building. I'm talking about the fixtures in the building, what the properties are assessed at. But when you look at that, and you look at what my property was assessed at, and what I had to do to appeal at, it was an, and a significant undertaking and, and cost to me to have to prove why it wasn't to be assessed at three hundred and eighty percent what it was. So the reason I bring that to your attention, and the reason I want to share the data with you, was if you look at that Excel file and just look through those properties, and look at the range of square footage prices, it goes anywhere from thirty dollars a square foot up to a hundred and twenty. And that shouldn't be. It should be a logical application. Now, wh- what's my ask to you, right? What am I, what am I here? What's the action? I think you have upward pressure that you can apply in the county, because this is Dayton. It's not Fort Thomas, it's not Bellevue. And if you look at some of the demographics comparatively, I've lifted, listed some of those that you can get off Nielsen and other things, it's not the same as Fort Thomas or Bellevue, and it shouldn't be evaluated per se. So I think we do have a, a bit of a problem from a business perspective, because I view it as very high taxes, right? Obviously, I'm paying almost, uh, three hundred and eighty percent of, of what I would expect to pay. Now, I figured a fair market value of my property was about three hundred and eighty-five K. I had an independent audit. It still came in about two hundred and fifty thousand less than, than what it was assessed at. The problem is, is that's sunk cost, right? The cost that I had to pay in property tax for the twenty twenty-four is lost funds, right? I can't recoup that. Well, the, my only other option besides going to the appeals process- I can't recoup that. Well, the, my only other option besides going to the appeals process, the appeals process is one guy in Campbell County, Mr. Braun, who arbitrarily makes the assessment, right? He must be the most powerful guy in the state of Kentucky. Um, he's more powerful than the governor to be able to have that, uh, revenue control. Then you go to a, an appeals process that includes two business owners that, you know, if you go look at their PIDs, maybe I need their tax accountants, right? Because it's, it's not applied favorably across the board. So I think when you look at the scope of the audit that you had earlier and you talk about the scope of the audit of that property tax, I'd like to see it expand. I'd like to see it expand even that spreadsheet that I provided on the commercial properties that are listed. And just, I'm not asking for zero property tax. That would be nice and, and hopefully that, that gets some, uh, lags, um, in some of the, the cities. I pay my fair share of property tax. I'm just asking for a fair application of, of the property tax and, and clear logic to it. Because I think what you're going to see, you're going to see more vacancies, particularly when you've got, uh, food service companies and, and low margin businesses, that, that impacts. It impacts money that maybe would have been used for boiler repair or, or, uh, air conditioning unit. My air conditioning units were s- were stolen from my building. I had to replace those. Simple things like that are significant costs. So when you got the added burden of inflated property tax like that, it's an impact. It's also could be an impact of maybe hiring a subcontractor, a local Dayton subcontractor to do work. Ten thousand dollars might not be a lot of money to some people. It is to me and it is to individuals within this community. We're probably the average income of fifty percent of the community is less than sixty thousand dollars. So to put that kind of, um, of inflationary, uh, impact on a business, I, I think is, um, is pretty difficult. So I think the market trends I listed, I'm not going to go through those in detail. I really just want to raise awareness. If you know me, what I did to the building, um, if I was in it for profit, I would have turned it and sold it. If you look at what I'm doing, I'm trying to provide an affordable place for the community to follow, like the Bellevue vets, um, in, in the veterans places where drink charges are not, you know, ten to twelve dollars. I'm charging four to six bucks for drinks. So to keep that type of cost down and make, uh, make it amenable so individuals can celebrate maybe life milestones, I think it's, um, you know, that, that's the intention of, of the place. So I guess my ask is, is you go to Frankfurt and as you have the conversations, because I know you're probably aligned with the, the administrators and what have you, you know, e- express this pleasure because it's not just me. It's local residents on fixed incomes that are being impacted. I'm sure you all are impacted as property owners, um, and we're not talking three to six percent. But the fact that I have to incur cost and the burden of proof is put on the property owner to then state your case to a, um, almost a Ponzi scheme kind of, uh, appeals, uh, court, it's, it's very challenging. And I shouldn't have to do that and residents shouldn't have to do that. So that's my ask is more awareness, um, and, uh, again, as maybe some of the savings that you're generating from these projects. If there's opportunities to pass that on to the businesses, which I know you are and abatements and other things, um, you know, I'd like to see that. So that was it. Again, I appreciate your time. I know it's been a long night for you and, um, you know, I, I, uh, I'm going to continue to appeal this. I was able to get it reduced at least to, uh, five hundred and eighty, which I still think is egregious. Because if you look at the actual sales prices in that area in the comparables, the transactional amounts, that's what it should be based on. It should be based on cash value, not arbitrary inflationary, artificial inflationary guidelines. So thank you. I don't know if you have any questions. Certainly love to answer it, but, um.
Yeah, if I could explain something about property taxes, I mean, you, you bought this building for one forty and now it's on the books at five seventy. Thank you so much for investing in Dayton. With property taxes by state law, we're limited that we can only take four percent more in, in total property taxes, not the tax rate, but the total property taxes can only increase four percent maximum year to year to year. We've reduced our property tax rate over the past couple of years from, I think, four point nine seven to three point nine nine. It's a twenty-five percent reduction in the rate. So if your property value had stayed the same, you'd be paying twenty-five percent less in property values. The PVA issue is not just in Kentucky. It's in almost every state where an outside entity, usually at the county level, assesses the properties. For decades, decades, you mentioned that we're not Fort Thomas or Bellevue. That's the way Dayton was looked down on and our property values here in town were severely depressed. The people that have been here the longest are profiting the most because my, my property, I've been here nineteen years. My property value has doubled if I was to sell it. My tax, my total tax has not been increased that much. So it's a misnomer. I'm sorry. I feel very passionate about this when people say the, the property taxes. The property taxes are capped by the state. And someday I'm going to have to sell my house or my heirs are, same with your property, and that's where your profit is going to come in. Now, the Burton building, because I just got this about four o'clock today and I didn't have too much time to do much research on it. But the Burton building right now is at a tax base of one point one million and it's ten thousand square feet, which is roughly what your building is. So they're being assessed at a hundred and ten dollars a square foot.
Could, can I challenge you on that, sir?
Sure, please.
Because that building was purchased at three, the, the actual cash value was three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That was the purchase price and it's in the PVA. That's what's listed on the site. Only after I raised my concern with my property tax on November twenty-sixth, did that assessment go up to one thousand. And I don't know what their agreement is from a tax-deferred situation, but you could argue then that they have what? Two point four million invested from, um, outside investors, catalytic fund or other things. So shouldn't that then be three point four million?
That's, and that's, I, I got a problem with the PVA too.
But don't you have to go, shouldn't you have to go off actual transactional value? What was the last recorded sale?
Well, the problem with going on just transactional value, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong here, Alex, I could sell you that property for a dollar and it's on the tax, it's on the rolls for a dollar. Some, there has to be an outside entity that assesses it and by whatever, whatever guidelines they go by as far as, uh, uh, your building is, is tough because there's no comps, okay? The closest comparative building would be the Burton building because it's mixed use. Could be resident, it is residential upstairs as yours could be. So that's really the only, the only comparison in the area that they could base it off of.
But shouldn't a square foot be a square foot, right? A square foot of property should be taxed at a very similar amount in a region, in a neighborhood. Wouldn't you agree to that?
Uh, I think it depends a lot on the condition of the property.
I, I agree, yes.
And unfortunately they can't inspect inside. A PVA doesn't.
But then how can you make in a judgment then if you can't inspect inside? You're strictly doing it on the outside. Nothing's changed on the outside, yet you inflate it by three hundred and eighty percent. What's the justification for that?
Mr. Bigger, um, and, and I know you probably know this, but there's an appeal process for a reason. The beautiful thing about a commercial building, and I know I've done this at least a hundred appeals for clients as well as half a dozen for myself, is your appraisals could be based upon the income and you can take that approach to your PVA who will look at the income and the profitability of that building and ultimately determine what the value is. So it's not a like-kind apples-to-apples. In your situation, if the property doesn't bring in the revenue source that you expect it to, because it's commercial-related, the appraisal will go down. So there's lots of ways to maneuver that point, but the nice thing about it is you've got a multiple-step process to appeal it. So at the underlying inspection period that you have with your PVA, you then go up to the board who's an independent board and you make your argument. The beautiful thing about Dayton is the property values continue to increase, and I'm a property owner in Dayton as well. I've seen the same effect. Bought a building for forty thousand, assessed at a hundred and seventy. It happens because all ships are rising with the tide. So the beautiful thing about it is on an individual basis like yourself, you can go there and argue, whereas a, a person that doesn't have maybe the sophistication level to do it is the one that's really being hamstrung by all the boats rising. So the position from the city is we're happy, you know, if, if you ever have an investor, someone that wants to come in for us to, to, to help maybe sit along with you and, and enjoy the ride and do whatever we need to. Because Dayton's going up in value and it has in just the six years that I've been here and lord knows how many years Joe's been here. I mean, everybody's building is becoming worth more.
And I appreciate that and I appreciate the, the input, um, but that was presented to the appeals committee. So the problem is now I have to go to the state in Frankfurt, incur attorney fees to defend.
Did you bring your own appraisal in based upon income?
I, I brought a, a, a property appraisal, not based on income.
It's, that's, that's the approach in a commercial setting. It, that's, that's the difference. It's an income approach. If your building only makes X amount of dollars on, on a, you know, a cap rate, that's why it's worth less. It's not a residential structure. So, you know, that's what would have mattered at the appeal board because there's no other, uh, evidence to refute your appraisal on the income stream.
But what, and I appreciate that again. Thank you for that information and, and I'll take that approach. I guess my question is when you do go through the appeals, why wouldn't they take that into consideration?
Because that's, that's, I mean, that's your burden, right? That's your work that has to be done because they've assessed it. It's you that have to counter it. But the nice thing about it is you can do it every year. It's not like it's one time and out. So next year you can fix it again. And you can do it every year until you get it right, and you will, because this time you're going to show them a tax return and say, this is what it makes. So as a result, the tenant, whoever owns the building versus the tenant, you'll be able to reflect the income. Happy to sit down with you and explain it to you, you know, to, to help you get there.
I appreciate that.
But you'll win because they can't argue otherwise. The Burton building is not a comp. There's residential. There's income that comes in. There's commercial. So he has to use all those different comps to be able to assess the value. If you're a single stream of income, it's going to go way down based upon profitability.
Appreciate that because the only other option was to create a nonprofit entity and do what you said, sell it to a dollar, and I don't want to do that.
This is so much easier to do it the right way. Just do an income approach, not a like-kind, you know, apples-to-apples because it's not. And just your, your profitability will go down, the value will go down and the, and the PVA will understand. Plus he's retiring in a year and a half anyway.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you for the information, um, and, uh, appreciate you staying extra to, to hear this.
We appreciate your investment in Dayton.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, I think the, the challenge is the sunk cost, right?
I'm, I'm around all, every Wednesday afternoon in the city building.
He's always at City Hall.
Happy, calling anytime.
Awesome. Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
It's good seeing you, sir. The podium is still open for anybody who'd like to address city council. There's only one left out there and he's saying no.
All right.
Thank you.
We appreciate you, Jared.
Any new business?
I do have new business.
What you got, Terris?
Recreation board, uh, committee formation. What can we do? I know we talked about that before, like forming a recreation board, uh, exploratory board where we can take some of the access funds that are left over from the parks board. I think there was excess of, uh, sixty thousand dollars that were under budget. Maybe taking ten thousand dollars of that and exploring leagues for, adult leagues for when the pickleball courts are open and, or like for when the, um, sports facilities are, the Gillen Park improvements, we should explore taking advantage of those things. And I'd like to not just talk about it in an open, open session like this. I'd like to see what we can do to form an exploratory board committee to actively put forth some funds to do, either it's a grand opening tournament or some kind of tournament to raise awareness, to see if we can get a recreation department for Dayton, to accompany the Parks Board if possible. Uh, it could be Parks and Rec, you know, but from my experience of trying to get, work with the Parks Department who do, who does a phenomenal job with the things that they do, with the, the trail, the trail park. My bike went over there for two hours and sat and had a blast with the kids, everything what they did. But I feel like there's the, we're missing, we're leaving money on the table and we're leaving opportunity to reach the community by not having a recreation board, and I would like to see what we can do to form that board and not just be talked. So the next meeting, we have some traction about, okay, we formed this board and now we are going to assess this, uh, allocated amount of money to programming for recreation.
No, so I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. That was going to be a topic I was going to bring up as well as committees. Um, I've been speaking via email with, uh, Mr. Edmondson here and it, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we need to draft something in executive order form is probably the best option to do it, or we can do it informally. And I think the more formal route would probably be best. I think the next step would be maybe one or two of us on council to just get together and hammer out what we want it to look like so we can run it past the full board. And I'd be happy to be part of that, that committee to do that, um, that ad hoc committee to, to form committees. So, uh, if anybody else would like me to join, join me on that, Terris, you're welcome. Anybody else is welcome as well. We can meet and, and hash that out, um, maybe some Wednesday afternoon when you're in the office.
And, and we're new, but so I'm sure you guys have seen, done this and seen this and heard this song and dance a bunch of times. But if you guys could take us through the process just once, uh, if Aaron and I are both, uh, remember Judd, or and I are both expressing interest to do this, please take advantage of this opportunity and how passionate we are, because I'm sure you probably have formed tons of boards before. But we would like opportunity to get our feet wet, please.
I would caution using the term board because a board has to be assigned by the mayor and it can't be people on council. I would suggest making it committees. We've talked about this before. And you don't have to have everybody on a committee. The committee has no, uh, they can make recommendations, but they can't make decisions and that's, uh, that's the safest way to do it. So I'm, I'm just saying, don't, don't say board because we don't have enough board members as it is. But if you would make a committee, then you can include council members on it.
But I, how serious are committees taken? I mean, we could be committeeing, we could be committeeing.
Two city council members talking about being on the same committee, I think it takes, has been taken pretty seriously.
Got it.
Yeah, agreed. And a lot of, and a lot of other cities take it very seriously. We have not had one here for a while, but I think it's time. And I think we talked about that during our strategic planning session. So I think it's time to move forward with it.
We, we did talk about it. I talked to Kathy Volter, um, a couple of weeks ago and she said that was standard years ago, that there were like at least five committees that were regularly participated in and reported on it. I, I'm not sure why they went through the, went into the wayside, but I think we should do it.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. There's the interest now, so let's get it going. So let's chat after here on, and try to find out a time that works for us, ideally when Mr. Edmondson can be involved as well.
So the next step, we, we would meet, we'd, we'd meet with, um, Councilor Edmondson and then we would put something on paper to say that we've got this committee that we would present to the city council.
Correct.
Yeah, you would need a motion by the council, I would imagine, to approve the committee, but other than that, I think it would be.
Alex, you said on an email.
There, there's a couple of just different ways to do it. I mean, the mayor can just, can form them based upon your all's recommendation and you just put together an executive order. It's done, right? And you can appoint, the way typically it's done is at the end, beginning of every year when the new term comes in of whether council members, the mayor kind of asso- assigns people to committees, or you could do it whenever you want. Somebody can't make it on Thursday nights. They just remove somebody off and put them on. But this is really not complicated. The issue is, is what for, what committees you want to do, put together some policies. We could draft them so that you guys kind of have something to go off of. You're going to get citizens that are coming. So you got to deal with those issues and how you want to do it, where you want to ha- hold them, those kind of issues. It's all public, right? So everything you talk about is, um, going to be out there for, so people can see it. And we can put them together, so just, uh, let me know.
Got it.
Okay, well, I would like to be a part of that too. So what does that look like until, what do we get done by the next meeting? So we don't bring this up again, because I think we bring it up every, every month, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we're wanting to meet on a Wednesday that, that works for Mr. Edmondson's schedule, that's great.
I'll work around whatever it guys work, that's for you. If you want to work on an evening or something, it's so you guys don't have to leave work.
Right after the meeting, look at our calendars and see what works.
I would suggest make a list of the committees that you would recommend by name.
Already done.
And what their responsibilities would be. And then you can get together and figure out, okay, are we going to have forty-two committees or only three or whatever?
I'd recommend against forty-two.
You know, so that we can, i- if you want to do it quickly, define them. And you can always add them. You can always change them, but if you really want to get it, it's like if you're going to have a, a. want to get it, like if you're going to have a Parks and Recreation Committee, what are their responsibilities? How many members will, will there be? And do that, and you could suggest one, you could suggest six, whatever you want to do. We used to have six committees. Well, it was before I got on council, but they had like a finance committee. So those three members were responsible for, the most responsible for going through the budgets.
Right. So what happened, do you think? Like, why did this kind of go away? Nobody said anything?
Um, I, you would have to ask the past administration.
Okay. Was it on your?
It was just sort of faded away.
Okay.
The past is in the past. We're the future.
Well, I'm curious how that went. Learn from the past.
All right. Well, any other thoughts on committees? Otherwise, I have two quick things before we wrap up. None?
Awesome.
All, all right. So one is, the O'Fallon Stallion Race happened on July 4th at noon. Barry Baker and I were holding strong with the Dayton crowd. But I'd like to see that increased for next year. So you will hear me talk about this coming up to next year's race. I want more Daytonians than we do Bellevuites. I'm going to make it upwards now at this point.
Bellevuians.
Bellevuians, is that what it is? I want more Dayton folks to, to attend that, that event. It was a great time. Everyone there had a, had a great time of all different skill levels. And you don't have to run to be part of it. You could be supporter, whatever it may be. But it's a great time. Highly recommend. The other item is that an organization that I am part of called Housing Opportunities in Northern Kentucky recently had an open house a month or two ago for a new home that was prepared, refurbished, rehabbed in the area, and is now ready to go, to go to a low to moderate income family. They've recently also purchased another property in Dayton, Kentucky at 814 Fifth Avenue. So that's 814 Fifth Avenue, not too far down the street here. And I was curious if there was any interest at all in making this a very heavily involved community project. So getting together maybe one day a week on a regular basis, or one day a month, where people from the Dayton community can help rehab a home for low to moderate income families in the city of Dayton, Kentucky. So no action needs to be taken tonight, but just think about that. And if there's any interest in people helping with that endeavor, please let me know. Thank you.
Excellent ideas. Any other new business? Have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Ladies first, Ms. Kelly had it. Second?
I'll second then.
All in favor?
Hi.
See y'all on August 12.
But she kept it going.